Yeah.
To the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it is a nation.
You have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Right.
On favor?
I.
Next up is approval of meeting minutes?
We approved May nineteenth and June fifth.
Uh, meeting minutes?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? All in favor?
I.
Public remarks, state your name, address, and try and keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone?
One.
Anyone online?
Raise hands up.
Raise your hand.
Join.
On once? Stay moving on. Okay, any financial transactions, Jeff? Or respondents?
No response.
And you're up.
General budget revenue. Right now with forecasting positive variance. Again. They kind of go through the high level property tax. That last month we were forecasting about three hundred fifty thousand dollars projected positive variance. As of today. Four hundred thousand, quarter thousand, nine thousand dollars. Interest rates. We gave one hundred ten thousand dollars. From from that up to the last, the last meeting, that's really consistent. I think we jumped it up above the initial amount of time that we had. For eight hundred seventy thousand dollars. Last month. One hundred ten thousand. And four.
I can hear you.
Okay. So I was thinking interest rates were were higher than than last month. So we we adjusted our. Our forecast for that and that that increased by about fifteen thousand dollars. License permits and fees primarily in the building department. They're about a hundred twelve thousand. Uh, they have their positive variance of about a hundred twelve thousand dollars. Uh, and last month we were forecasting a sixty thousand dollar positive variance. The town clerk is pretty much right at budget. They're actually about twenty four hundred dollars short. Uh, with their with their revenue. Uh, no change in the grants, federal and state grants. Most of that is the ECS grant. So really no change there and just a very slight change in other revenue. Uh, and that was sales equipment at the fire department public work. So last month we were forecasting for five hundred twenty five thousand dollar. Uh, positive variance in revenue. This month now it's five ninety five. And taking into consideration the hundred ten thousand dollar adjustment, we were, you know, we're closer about seven hundred ten thousand dollars. If I exclude the one tenth that we already did twice. So overall revenues have been have been very, very strong, particularly in the in the tax department and and interesting.
Are we expecting any increase in special education revenue from the state? Allocated.
We saw. An increase in in special ed. That goes back to credit or special education expenditures. Uh, I could look it up right now. It wasn't as you it was under a hundred thousand dollars.
It's like forty four times or something.
Yeah, but I'll give you the whole almost. They do a great, great job identifying some of the revenue numbers that can come in. So that amount was just under forty two thousand dollars. So they received about hundred, almost six hundred eighty three thousand dollars in excess costs. That will get credited against their.
Okay.
Any other questions on revenue?
And beyond what he just said, any more possible revenue from the state over the next number of weeks, month or two?
No. It's pretty much it.
The only additional that came in is what we talked about in the last meeting. They uh, they got a little more than they thought for ECS for the future budget, right? For the twenty five, twenty six? Did they get an extra like ninety three or?
Yeah, it was around ninety thousand dollars.
And that was the case of it not being cut like anticipated, but receiving the same amount as previously.
Yeah, they they held us harmless. That was just like.
Yeah, that's what I think it was.
So moving on to expenditures. It will jump right to the bottom and then you can kind of go back up to the top, very bottom. The general general under town operations about a ten maybe eight thousand dollar positive variance. Last month as a major peak year forecasting three hundred sixty. So it didn't really change too much.
Now, does this include the twenty seven? Now that's in the um. Yeah, you were going to pull twenty seven thousand for the police department.
That's taken into account, like twenty seven thousand dollars. And you can see the hundred, the very last, very last line of operating transfers that's taken into account offering that thousand dollars to the capitals.
Okay.
I believe at the last forecast, we didn't have anything in it to go under town council special. Uh, we're forecasting eighteen thousand dollar deficit. That's for the Skinner Street central fire department. So it is twenty thousand dollars. It was ten and ten over. There's some other savings in that. It's a town council, so it's gonna be about eighteen thousand dollars. Health insurance went up a little bit uh, to 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 the good, but a hundred fifty thousand other positive variance. And that really happened to a lot of vacancies in term of that.
Right.
What we're gonna see next year, though, a lot of people are getting married, so they don't save it with E plus one. So it's actually trying to back our favor for next year. That 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 for this year, that positive variance was driven by by staff agencies. And that that holds true if you look at a lot of the larger numbers, regular patrol. Pat vacancies. Uh, in the police department. And one of the ones I didn't have on last month was public works admin. They had a couple. Maybe one large repair forty thousand dollars for a new engine for one of their trucks. So that staff to rely on, which is here for repair and maintenance, has right now what a seventeen thousand dollars deficit. And overtime, if you recall, overtime budget was cut. And it seems like it it only snows on weekends. Uh, so that that's about a thirty four thousand dollar deficit. But with some other savings, some other lines, we're forecasting that 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 department's in about thirty thousand dollars overspend. And really not much by way of change from my last forecast last last month. You'll see some thousand dollars here and there that. Uh, what kind of forecasting they they kind of just add up. To uh, most likely the difference that that we jumped up around twenty or thirty thousand dollars. But mostly been driven by some big decisions. That's where the big positive variance. So what that means if you go to EC. Is we're forecasting revenues. Of about fifty seven point four billion. Expenditures of about fifty seven point one million. Leaving us with net income of just slightly over three hundred thousand dollars. Which will increase. FY twenty four is. Fund balance from six point three million to about six point six million dollars. Or eleven point three percent. Uh, of unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of the latest border finance proposed budget. So we're kind of right in between that ten and twelve in this in the sweet spot. Any questions on expenditures or?
Jeff, if a position goes vacant for quite some time, the town division just swallowed it up and determined it's not needed and it's not left as vacancy anymore. How does how does that work long term?
That's a high call.
If it were a position that were consistently vacant for. An intentional reason, it would probably not last long in a budgeting process. If it were a position, and I'll use in this case a police officer position, that is vacant because of challenges associated with filling a position. It would take quite a while, I think, before we'd start to eliminate them because it starts to cut into the ability to then staff up when you can. So when we've got positions that are open. And we don't need to fill them, they. I would be surprised personally if I let them last into another fiscal year, frankly.
I think we even had that in this budget year. Right. You made a change in, what's it, social services?
In human services, we made that change.
Right.
Because we had a position that was vacant and we made a conscious decision, as I described to you during the process, to sort of change the way we handle. The business of that department. We eliminated some services and. Done without that position.
Any other questions? All right. Your business. Jeff, do you want to start with this?
Yeah, I guess I'll start. Given uh, you know, given the fact that. We are forecasting right now and it is it is somewhat preliminary because we do not know where the. Deficit will end up with board of education, but based on the last. Document that they produced, which was in March. Which is on the the last page of my expenditure forecast. They were anticipating about six hundred eighty one thousand dollar deficit. Factoring in that that shortfall that they were gonna have. We were gonna have.
I'm regaining one thousand.
A little over three hundred thousand dollars of a. Of a positive variance. So I just put that on the agenda to see if there was. Any appetite to do something that anticipated certain ones.
So how? Are you saying we have three hundred thousand after paying that deficit?
Correct. Participating have three hundred hundred. If that deficit comes in, yeah.
Right, but they don't really close their books till. September or October. There's a good chance it's gonna increase significantly. But last year it was eight hundred million.
Yeah.
Yeah, eight hundred thousand. So under normal conditions, um. That money would go into the fund balance.
Correct.
And uh, what you're asking us to do. Is to allocate that. Toward um. Prepaying. Items in the budgets.
Exactly.
And I personally am not um, in favor of that. Uh, I think we have developed our budget. It's presented to the town council. It's in their hands. And I think we should not. Make any changes. Well, thanks.
Is this is this a recommendation?
I'm just throwing out there really for discussion for the board.
I just worry that we don't really know what that deficit is. And it's it's been big.
So we stopped over at the. Board of Ed meeting going on. They provided a packet. Our estimates in here were. A range of six hundred eighty twenty five.
Yeah.
So right now it's in our budget. It's kind of smack in the middle of that. So if they came in at the high end of their projection. There's arguably a hundred and fifty ish.
Yeah.
Thousand that could people get doing something with it. And still cover the high end of where they think they would be from a deficit perspective. Alana, what's the hesitation for not wanting to? Is it because we? We're still waiting for the town council to do something with our proposed budget or?
Yes, yes, we've we've uh. Uh, passed a budget on this board and it's. Now it's onto the town council. And um. They need to send it to the voters or do whatever they feel they must do.
Send it back to us. It's good.
We could.
It's not an opportunity to make it something more appealing for the voters, right?
No, I I think it would not make something more appealing for the voters. Because I don't think, I think the majority. Of the town, and I certainly could be wrong, but from what I'm getting is um. And. That many people I'm running into are saying. Go for it. Good job.
And this is an opportunity to get more. More into next year's budget for the same number that's going to the voters saying, good job.
No, it wouldn't. What would happen is we'd eliminate these items from budget. Then the town council still has our our budget that we proposed. And they that would give them room in in their budget to do whatever they wanted them. You know, if it were a hundred and fifty thousand, they'd have a hundred and fifty thousand room in the budget. To uh.
To help offset some of the challenges that we receive in budgets.
Well, and the other thing is too, we keep talking about a sinking fund for special ed. And I mean, if we had some surplus left over, it's exactly where I'd want to put it. Like last year, we put. A couple hundred thousand into that special ed fund. Um, it didn't come to capital, any any sinking fund money. And I'm thinking that with whatever we do have after paying that deficit. That we should be looking to put money in there. In that. In that fund. That special fund.
Reducing potential deficits next year. By being able to.
Be nice if they ran without a deficit.
Understand?
Yeah, yeah.
Respect of the special ed touches. Can't tell it's going to be this year or next year yet.
Right, right.
Always go up and not down.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what you're suggesting is that. If it went into a sinking fund, it could help offset a deficit. Next year.
Or any future year. Right, and it also um. It it just to me is a smart thing to do. Um, it's been recommended and recommended over and over again to create a sinking fund. Because of the um. Concerns with the special ed and and the lack of funding from the state. And we did that last year and has two hundred fifty thousand. Right, I think it was two hundred and fifty within. Um, as kind of a backstop. And I would like this year the same thing. If we clear their deficit of, call it eight hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand. The difference in the surplus, I'd like to see it go into that special ed fund because if that's really where the spending problem is. That's what we should be doing. Because that's what we've been told what's. The overspending is their special ed budget. So that's that's just kind of my thought. And I get very nervous spending money before really, really have it.
Because I'm absolutely able to spend that money however they know.
Madam Chair. And I can make a motion that we table this until we have further. Information till the budget is. You know, we're speculating on. What uh, surpluses we may may not have. I'd rather. Vote on specific uh, specific information which were further down the line. So I make a motion that we table this at this time.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
I agree with that. Let's not make any decisions. We still have a lot of ambiguity out here. We don't even know if the voters are gonna accept whatever.
Right.
And I think we should not presume that.
Kurt, I'm sorry. What did you say? We don't know what you agree is.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
We don't know what the. What the. For this. You agree with me? Yes, ma'am.
Who would an accountant say that? Don't forget anything. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, yeah. Does the council have authority to spend that money? And during their deliberations, in other words. If they had, they had an area, whether it was board of ed or town budget, and 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 we projected that for having. Can they? Can they direct it to that? To that place?
I I think by charter they give us some flexibility on on what they can do.
Yeah, because I I know they cannot raise raise the budget. But I know they can cut it or they can pass it on to the voters. But if if there's that that money. If that money could be used by the the council. I'd I'd just like to know about it. I I don't. I just I just think that that they might they might have some good ideas for it as well as our ideas. So it's there to final say before it goes to the voters. And they they should have a. Should have an opinion where that goes.
I got I got a quick question, maybe the manager, Mr. Cox, could help out. I had a chance to read through the attorney's uh, letter. Obviously. Plus it's fourteen. But what can they act, what can actually the county council do as far as can they, according to the attorney? Allocate those funds for the, you know, according to the charter, nature's, or do they require to take what we give them? If they're not gonna do anything but go over it, because that's all they can do. And then pass it.
So let me be clear, what what monies are you talking about? Are you talking about the surplus that was on the?
Predict the surplus.
I think. As I think Jeff alluded to, I think the council has some flexibility there. It would expect a recommendation before it's going to use. Uh, before it's going to reallocate those dollars from this body.
Which I I think Dave, that's exactly what kind of went down last year when we went through this. And we kind of agreed to put break up certain money. Um, we did make, we had questions, but um, that's how money ended up in that special education fund. But that was after books were closed. It wasn't.
I agree with Mr. Brown on that. We don't know what's out there. I'd love to table this too.
Okay, take the vote, please. Right, all in favor of tabling it?
I.
Anyone opposed? Don't think so. Okay. See here. Continued business. I think the budget's kind of in limbo. This point, most of anyone, yeah, Jeff.
Next week.
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Yeah.
Answer anywhere or another.
All right, special presentations? Nope. Okay, all right. Moving on to liaison. Okay, um, did I miss something? Okay, so um, we're not gonna have any budget discussion tonight beyond that. No, okay, no, all right. Um, okay, town council. I think most of us were at town council, so we have a referendum date on. The only thing I will add is I I did um, zoom in on the um. Firehouse workshop. And I actually found it very, lots of good information, things I didn't know. Um, like. Um, there's some asbestos problems. There is the, one of the fire stations, no sprinkler system. Um, there were a laundry list of things that. I didn't even know. And I just kept thinking, I guess the public doesn't know either.
Their old buildings?
Huh?
And their old buildings?
Yes, and they're.
Not in the new one that we proposed.
No, this is this is in the old, the two old buildings. Um, and it, you know, it wasn't that long the meeting, but what was presented, I was like. Well, that's a real problem and is a serious problem. And be. I'm not keen on spending money, but I I looked, that's it. It's it's a risk. We have some, we have some. Big risks sitting with those old firehouses. So anyway, that was my takeaway from that, that workshop. So we can move on. Uh, Kurt, Board of Ed?
I just made a couple of comments uh, earlier today during six thirty for the education's having a budget meeting. And I just did make a comment from the standpoint, I acknowledge that there are. I went to the meeting last week. And they do have a real interest in they. Supporting the students and the staff and what they do. I realize they have the challenges and all that. But what I got out of the meeting last time, they were really kind of focused on the students and sat staff and being successful. Now, what next year is gonna bring, I have no idea, but I just want to point that out to them. I do appreciate what they do. Okay, agree, there may be some more work that they have to do. But let's just, you know, they are looking out for the students and staff.
So I agree. Okay, um, Ted, economic development?
Well, we're just still doing the um. New business of the month and established business of the month. Um, every once in a while you might see an article in the paper, a picture, so on, that we take upstairs. Um, also, they had a little seminar for small business. I did not attend it, but it was scheduled for last month. Um, uh, two, two guys uh. Came in and did a presentation for a small business. The uh, old home day parade. Theirs, their theme this year is uh, town small business. Um. So hopefully we'll have floats and a lot of recognition for uh, small business in town. Uh, that's about all I can say.
Okay. AJ?
Yes, the majority of the meeting for the Lake Commission was tied up in plan review, so they tabled about half of their agenda. They ran late on those. Um, notable things, uh, they did start over the weekend, the first treatment for the hydro.
Yeah, I saw that.
Uh, and they also made a note that the algae levels are elevated for this time of year. It was not a consensus that it is algae that is causing Lake to have that greenish tint, uh, some people are still keeping it a bit pollen. Uh, but we are getting on Chez A, which is the company doing the testing, uh, we're not getting reports back on phosphorus, uh, fast enough pace, so we're still, uh, still haven't heard back, and phosphorus is elevated to go with the algae, so.
Yeah, they, they think. Yeah, I, I know, I think we had a situation with problems with algae, we had a lot of rain.
Yes.
A lot of rain, no sunshine, and I think that.
And that's why they're very interested in.
Right, getting, yeah.
Means we see elevated phosphorus in the lakes, so. They're going to push on them to try to get testing that's been done, get those reports back, so they could understand more.
Yeah.
And start treating hydrologers, comments made that areas where, like.
Yeah, that is. Right, your commission?
I haven't received any new information, but Dave, can you update us on the condition of the firehouse negotiations at this point?
Sure, so the, as you know, the town has, it's with, with respect to Eleven Skinner Street, we have an agreement with the owner there that gives the town right now through the end of July to try and make a decision. As was alluded to earlier, the town council and the fire commission and some representatives from the fire department met uh, last week and had continuation of a discussion they're having about how to modify the plan at Eleven Skinner Street to reduce those costs, uh, and perhaps hold off on expenses related to longer-term, uh, needs and goals until those are closer in time. Uh, so they're working on that now, they kind of came to an agreement on a, on a basic plan, and I've given the go-ahead uh, for the architect that we're working with to get those, get that cost done professionally, and by that I mean, uh, they have a contractor with whom they work that does that estimating, uh, for them rather than sort of thumbnail based on broad, broad understanding of costs, so they'll get into some of the details, what, what costs for spring bush systems, what will it cost for electrical uh, updates, plumbing, et cetera, et cetera, so they'll have some pretty, uh, pretty significant, pretty detailed, uh, cost estimates for the town that we can then use, uh, as we communicate with the community around a town meeting and likely a referendum for that acquisition and, and the bond issuance related to it. You'll be asked eventually, you, this body will be asked eventually to uh, sound off on that as well, mainly the, those two items, the land acquisition and the bonding related to it. Um, otherwise, the, the fire commission continues its efforts to oversee and with the fire department and et cetera.
And thanks. Hey. Brownfield, Jim?
A couple of things to report, still more conversation on Three Walnut about having that area being a park. And also some interesting news too, uh, for Thirteen Summer Street, right across the street from Center School, the, the idea right now is to create a retail stores and have apartments above that, uh, building right now, still in infancy stage, long off, and a lot of things have to be done, but they're leaning toward looking at that as, you know, an area for tax revenue for the, uh, of the town, but that would come with a lot of amendments and contracts and additional negotiations, that'll be part of the, uh, the plan of conservation and development, the P O C D. And, uh, you know, more information to come, and regarding the pictures I had talked about of those properties, uh, the intern, the UConn intern, uh, will be providing artificial intelligence of what those properties will look like, retail apartments and also the park. And hopefully I could have a couple of slides I could, we could share at our July meeting to see what, get, put a visual to those, uh, uh, locations, and, and the UConn intern also did some market analysis, demographics, housing, real estate usage, and employment opportunities in East Hampton as part of the P O D, uh, survey plan, uh, to, to have the community involved in making good decisions for our time.
Okay, in capital committee, that's that's done. Yeah, why am I skipping it? I don't know, usually I skip Jim.
Um, the gap in the airline trail, um, work should start soon, the permitting is done, and they're hopeful that, uh, the work will begin soon. Tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts at Sears Park, uh, are almost finished, they're um, painting lines soon, I don't know, is now, has done it, or?
In the next couple of weeks, they, could be by the end of the month, they'll have the acrylic clay surface, which is the colored surface that then has all the lines for the tennis courts, pickleball courts, et cetera, et cetera. By the end of the month, that should be it.
Thank you. They had a very successful golf tournament, and the money they earned there will, um, go to mulch playgrounds and to fund their scholarship. Uh, twenty twenty-six, their, um, special revenue fund helped the budget process by, uh, purchasing fog protection in the playgrounds and funding their, some of their own salaries and, um, from the airline mine trail maintenance and repair. Also, funding materials and services related to athletic fields for schools. So, um, Parks and Rec, I think are doing a very good job.
Yeah.
Where's, where's the, um, the work on the, uh, the trail, where, where's the the gap in there?
Yeah, oh, where is the gap?
You know where that is?
Yeah, it's, uh, under sixty-six and it is a between sixty-six and Cobalt.
Oh, okay.
And, um, about a mile down, if you look, Deepo Hill Road, take a right into the parking lot there, um, about a mile and then, and toward East Hampton from there.
Oh, okay.
Is, um, trail, but then it stops abruptly where a creek, a stream runs along the trail, so they're going to put a boardwalk in there.
Yeah, a good, uh, a good, uh, estimate of, estimate of the location is essentially behind Public Works and the wastewater figure. That stretch of the airline trail is really what we're talking. And access to this, this is a shot.
Been in the process for
Over a decade or so?
Yeah, a long time, so it's, this is.
Again, I'll remind you, that's federal money, most of that is federal money.
Yeah.
Uh, that is, uh, in the possession of the state right now, so it's secure. One point four million dollars of about a one point eight or so million dollar job.
And the, what's going on in the center of town, that is also, is that grant money?
That is also grant money.
Okay.
Uh, the council's asked me to prepare something that we'll put in the paper to kind of remind the community of that, but that's.
Because there's been a lot of, you know, are we paying for that?
Yeah, yeah, uh, that's about a one point five million dollar project and one point three million that comes from state revenues in the Stephen Grant, uh, program and the Community Connectivity Grant Program. So the town gets about a one point five million dollar job for about two hundred and some odd thousand.
All right, public remarks? Again, um, step up, say your name, your address, and try and keep to three minutes. Do we have anyone online, Jeff?
I'm here to speak. And, uh, we like this town because that we could settle in because we believed in its schools, its values, and the strength of the community. Tonight, though, I speak to you not just as a parent, but someone who's deeply concerned with the direction things appear to be heading. My son will be attending the high school in September. When he was in the middle school, he had tremendous pride, uh, participating in varsity cross-country volleyball, basketball. And these programs, they don't just promote physical activity. They build confidence, community character, right? My daughter, she'll be entering seventh grade, and she's an accomplished gymnast, but, you know, never really took to team sports. She found her place on the middle school cheerleading squad. She'll be devastated if the programs cut. But these are more than just extracurriculars, they're lifelines for connecting, belonging, sports. And at the same time, we're seeing crucial social services placed on the chopping block, referenced special education costs. Gutting them is just going to further compound the challenges that our students are facing. I, uh, I'm concerned, I, I feel as a resident that things are out of control right now. And we're discussing buying a property from the Rams family, and we have significant challenges with our current state, and, and the education is, is a big concern of mine. These cuts risk pushing families to seriously think through whether East Hampton remains the right place to raise our kids, and that's what we need. I urge the board and the town leadership to slow down. I was very concerned with what I heard just now about a potential surplus. If the Board of Ed is at the high end, there still could be upwards of three hundred thousand remaining. It's my understanding that saving sports is in the sixty K range. The fact that that wasn't discussed here and you've decided to move on gives me tremendous pause. I think we need to think more about the kids, community, and how all this goes hand in hand. We want people in this town, we want taxpayers, you're going to scare parents away.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one online, Jeff?
I'd like to make a little statement.
Yep.
The money that the, uh, that is in the education budget over the years, it doesn't stop with that, with what is in the education budget, it will go to education. Uh, for instance, uh, this year is three hundred fifty thousand in capital, which is on the town's side of the budget that benefits education, solely education. Parking, Parks and Rec supplies about forty-seven thousand dollars for services relating to athletic fields. Um, the reading program we purchased as a group for edu- for education is a hundred and ten thousand. The financial support that Jeff and his team and our town's finance department is, is about a hundred and seven thousand. Um, grounds and upkeep that isn't broken out, so I don't have a number for that. Um, so that totals about six hundred fifteen thousand. You know, that, and that, that's in the town's side of the budget. So, then you talked about the deficit. Last three years, the deficit for the Board of Ed was three hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, and as I understand, six hundred eighty thousand this year. So, um, you know, the town is covering a lot for the Board of Ed, what isn't specifically in the Board of Ed's budget. Uh, you say sixty thousand dollars for sports. You know, out of a thirty-eight million dollar budget, you think they'd be able to find sixty thousand dollars in sports, but that's not our job to decide where the Board of Ed spends its money. Um, so, I encourage you to, uh, go to the Board of Ed and talk to them about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just one thing, I, I think, I, I'd really like to stop thinking about it as an us versus them discussion. We're one town, and we support everybody in town, and so that budget is just as much ours as it is the Board of Ed, yes, they get to go make final say as to how we go and allocate that money, but we're one town, we're here to support everybody, let's stop having the conversations, we're giving them all these things, know the town is collectively supporting the needs of the town. We want to keep it that way, let's try.
I agree, I agree. I agree, we have, uh, the entire town to think of. Yes.
Anyone else? Yes, no? I want to make sure, no one else for public remarks, I don't want to cut anybody short. No? May I have a motion to adjourn? A motion, a second? All in favor?
All right, all right.
Hi.